So call to order, the June 12th, 2025, City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. We'll start with communications from the public. In order to comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? Awesome, thank you. Consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless the commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The only item for the consent agenda is to consider approving the minutes of the regular meeting held Thursday, May 22nd, 2025. Is there a motion?
I'm...
Go ahead, Marcia. Marcia. All right, Marcia, you've got a motion?
Second.
Second, thank you, sir. We have second all in favor. All right, action items for the evening. A, consider approving the site plan amendment for Industry Park Friendswood Phase Two located at 4,500 and 4,552 Farm to Market 2,351. Staff summary, please, Aubrey.
Yes, sir. So this is a project we've been working on for a while. The original project took place back in 2022, actually June 9th, so three years ago. And a lot of, some of y'all weren't here at that time, but we did work with the developer at that time to work on, worked on changing some ordinances and enhancing some things to allow some development to happen out there in the industrial area of Friendswood, the Panhandle. So we accomplished a lot. The original site plan for this portion of the, this is phase one of this project and they have a phase two planned. But the original landscaping plan for this portion included 17 trees and then 17 trees were buffered trees between the industrial, his new development and the existing commercial pads or pieces that front 2,351. So there's a gas station and two car repair places that are in front of him. He submitted a site plan amendment in 2023 of June and pieces of that were approved. At that time, the buffer was required to be in place between industrial and CSC zoning. Since that time, the owner has obtained letters from those adjacent commercial property owners that none of them want the additional, the new trees in that landscape buffer. There is a detention swell in there that if the trees got large enough could impact the drainage. And he also contacted council members at that time and expressed concern about requirements of those trees. I think you'll remember at the beginning of this year, council discussed an item to consider an appeals process to planning and zoning commission decisions, and that was not approved. That was partially related to this item. And then we changed the landscaping ordinance to give the commission some more latitude in considering existing conditions on the properties to give y'all the latitude to make these decisions instead of it just being a requirement. So that brings us to today. We have a site plan amendment by the owner to install nine mitigation trees. The mitigation trees were originally on the piece behind this property, but they wanted to go ahead and mitigate them on this part of the project. So the proposal tonight that's up for consideration is to, just the installation of the nine trees in lieu of the 34 that was originally required.
Is that everything, Aubrey?
Yes.
Okay. Does the applicant here, a chance?
Yep.
Want to please introduce yourself?
I'm Stephanie Kennedy. I'm with Coastal Bed Engineering, the engineer on the project. I'm here to answer any questions or any thing y'all might want to ask.
Awesome, thank you so much. So we'll go around, any comments that you'd like to make? We'll go ahead and start down with you, Commissioner Anderson.
No comments from you.
Anything you got for Commissioner Bounds?
What kind of trees?
They're magnolias.
Magnolias, okay. Nothing else?
Pretty much the same question I had, what type of trees?
Yeah, magnolias.
What size trees?
They're class one, size one.
Sorry, anything else? So I do have a couple of questions, sorry. The, one, I think there's some magnolias up already, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And then, so I know there's been a lot of work and develop and there's been rules changed since we started this project because it's been a couple of years. But I know working out on the Panhandle, we were trying to make it as conducive as possible for everything that we've done. And I know 34 trees is a lot. I really appreciate that we've opened up the commission to be able to have a little latitude and we're not bound by that. After looking at it, there is the drainage in between, talking with those folks and having trees are already kind of there, I think that's on their property, is that right?
Correct, they have trees on their side, but we would not be allowed to count them on our side. So they're still within the area, we just can't count them.
Right, right. We do have to always think about what if then they move out and someone takes us down and then now there's not that buffer there. But I think the buffer and the distance makes sense, but that was 17 of the 34 and then the other 17 would be spread throughout, but then now we're down to nine. And I guess that's where I was kind of following along and then I got lost a little bit. Can you speak to that a little, why we went 34, 17, and then nine?
So nine of those trees have always been mitigation trees?
Right.
Mitigate the trees that were already there. And then the other trees were all buffer trees. And then there were some trees that were actually eliminated because when you looked at where the camera views were for security cameras, they would be getting in the way of kind of the view of everything. And so when we went over with the owner, they decided they want to do the nine mitigation trees and just see if that would be acceptable.
Yeah, well, I know in Friendswood, we love our trees, right? And so the nine makes sense as a mitigation for the nine that were there before and the 17, but I guess that's where I'm at, I lost those eight trees that I just, there's room out there and it's kind of, kind of empty out there. Is there, was there a reason for those eight trees?
Those eight, I believe, were part of the one foot, one tree per 25 foot of linear foot for the buffer, correct?
So the, so there, the 17 trees were between two properties, that was the one per 25 for the screening. I believe the other trees would just, because it's industrial, would just be the one per 40 for perimeter trees. Because there's no other screening required and we took it out of the community overlay district.
Right, the screening was just because this tract is on industrial and the one in front are zoned CSC.
Right, which that's the 17 between the two properties that are like the light gray. But the other ones are just perimeter trees that are around, like measured on the perimeter of the property, like one per 40 feet.
I know we've been working on this, I thought it was two years, I guess it's been three, maybe since the beginning, but I would kind of like for the whole commission to be here. I know we're a little light today, but for, so can I adjust the motion to, so we can put it on next, the next agenda?
Yeah, we don't have a motion yet. So if you, if we want to, you can do a motion to postpone to the next regular meeting and we can put it on the next agenda for when we have a full commission.
Okay, and that's not gonna, I know that's not gonna crush you guys. Okay, that, then, so I can make that motion or should we have someone else motion first?
You can make it.
Okay, I'd like to motion that we postpone this for the next one so we have kind of all of us here for this decision. That's my motion.
It'll require a second and then a vote, okay?
And then second, all in favor of that motion to postpone? All but one.
And I would say if you have any comments that you want to send back to us, you can feel free to give us comments.
Okay, awesome, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, awesome, thank you very much. All right, B, consider approving a site plan amendment for Dance Expressions at 204 West Heritage Drive. Staff summary, Ms. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. This is an existing building that was constructed in 2012. The property is zoned Community Shopping Center. It fronts Heritage Drive. The owner is proposing to add 2,780 square feet of office space to the rear of the building. They are adding 11 parking spaces as well as onsite detention. The original detention for that building was draining to the city pond, like right next door to the property. The addition of office spaces will be, or the addition will consist of office spaces, a conference room, a break room, and a storage area.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Is the applicant here? All right, let's, up for discussion. We'll start the same side. I'll switch next time, Willie, I apologize.
No, everything's pretty clear to me, no questions.
Commissioner Bounds?
Nothing, nothing from my end.
All right, ma'am?
It looks good. It has a large parking area, which I think it totaled 37 spaces. And it's not going to have any more people coming through, it's just for me, the office administrator group, so it looks good.
Yeah, I agree, I think you nailed it. And they, they covered parking and drainage, so on a day like today, I know drainage is a big deal.
It is going to be a separate business. I think it's the owner's husband that owns, it's a separate, like office for his business, so it will be a separate operation, but it's just office use, so it's not as intense. The other thing I did want to point out, some of their landscaping from their original site plan approval has disappeared. So we will be requiring them to reinstall all their required landscaping that was on their original site plan as well.
So they need another, we have to put this on hold?
No, no, they're just going to have to put back what was originally approved onsite.
Do we need to annotate that in the motion?
I don't think so. Well, it was on their site plan and when we go do a final inspection, we're going to be looking for that. It's on the plan, so we'll check for it.
I feel like the site plan is the kind of agreement, so I think that would work.
Yeah.
Awesome. Is there a motion?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to make a motion approve.
Okay, motion approve, second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. All right, C, consider approving the site plan for Sterling Falls Venue to be located at 2,600 South Friendswood Drive. Staff summary, Ms. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. So this is a new project. It is at 2,600 South Friendswood Drive. You've seen it a couple of times, we did the zone change for it and then we did the preliminary and final plats, so the name is familiar to you. This is for a new event venue. It's going to have a banquet hall and a chapel in addition to an outdoor chapel and some outdoor space for weddings and other special events. All of the facilities are going to be inside of a walled courtyard with a lot of landscaping. They are trying to mitigate noise from 518 for the events. The, let's see, I don't think, the parking lot's up front, the dumpster screening is there. Oh, the other thing, they are requesting to not install the sidewalk. So whoever makes the motion, whatever decision y'all want to make on that, the zoning ordinance does allow for the commission to consider waiving the sidewalk requirement when it's unsafe. In this particular instance, this is open ditch on 518, and if you're looking, if you're standing on 518 looking at the property to the right, it literally goes into an 80-foot wide drainage ditch that's owned by the Drainage District. They are installing like a retaining wall down the whole side of that property, and so you would just be leading pedestrians into a ditch. There's no sidewalk going across the little bridge, so it would literally be a sidewalk to nowhere and not safe at this point. So that is part of their request to waive that sidewalk requirement.
And if I'm correct, the other side even has some sort of drainage right there, is that correct?
Yes, the other side is encumbered with, there's a 50-foot drainage easement and then on the residential properties that back up to it, they have a 30-foot drainage easement, which there is a note on the site plan typically, when commercial property is adjacent to residential property, it requires a screening, so an eight-foot fence, a tree every 25 feet, and the 15-foot landscape buffer. The zoning ordinance says that if there is a drainage ditch, a canal, you know, some sort of separation, that that screening may not be required. So they are using that exception to not put screening along the parking lot area. Like I said, the court, where the buildings are is going to have a wall around it, so there will be a wall on that portion. But they're not required to do all of the 15-foot buffer with a tree every 25 feet along the property line. The detention pond is at the back, it's, do we have that page? Okay, it's a continuation.
Behind the wall on?
Yeah, yeah. A very long, narrow property. And it backs up to the, one of the West Ranch detention ponds on the back.
Okay. Awesome, thank you, Aubrey, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And I promised Willie I'd start with you this time. Any comments?
I mean, we're approving the site plan for this, that's all we're doing, so the sidewalk really doesn't have anything to do with it right now, correct?
Yeah, no, the sidewalk, the request to waive the sidewalk requirement is included in their request for tonight, yes, so that is your decision.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that at all. I think that the whole plan and everything looks really, really good and it's going to add to our city, so I like it, I approve it.
Commissioner Bounds, you're in the middle, so you get?
Thank you. No, I think it looks great. I worry about ditch flooding them, but other than that, I'm pretty good with it.
Awesome. Commissioner Anderson?
It looks good, I'm just curious about any comments from the public, because right now it looks pretty good to me, but I didn't know if anyone had any things that would influence my views of it.
I did receive some, I've been getting phone calls from the residents that back up to this, invited, they're out of town tonight and weren't able to make this meeting, but I did put them in contact with the general contractor on the project to work out any, you know, I made the suggestion that they go ahead and put a fence down the property line where the parking lot is for their own security, so whether or not, which Troy's here, I don't know if that was discussed or not, but they, I've given each other their contact information so they can work out any issues between the two of them.
I think that was going to be my only comment. I know for Commissioner Anderson, they have drainage on both sides and a detention pond on the back, not to mention retaining wall, I think they should be good there, but the one question I had was down that I was going to think that they would put a buffer of trees, but it looks like there's a parking lot on that south side or parking spaces along that south side. So I do like that they have plenty of parking, but yeah, recommended fence for their security and just as a good neighbor to the people that live to the south of them there, that they're not staring into a parking lot. I realize they have that buffer of space, but when it's a drainage ditch, it's open space and it's viewable, so I think that would probably be a good call if they did that. I don't know if there was feedback at all, but, okay, without anything else, is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion to approve?
Can you include the, if you're going to waive the sidewalk requirement, can you include that in your motion, please?
We have a motion to approve considering the sidewalk, keeping the sidewalk in consideration.
Waiver for no sidewalk?
Correct.
A second.
All right. All in favor? Yeah, I think drainage ditch to drainage ditch in that area, I think is, makes sense. All right, D, consider approving preliminary plat of Falling Leaf Ranch, a subdivision of 122.007 acres of land. Out of those certain tracts described by deeds recorded under GCCF number 2023024935 and being a replat of lots 1 through 14, block 2, Falling Leaf Drive, B-bar circle and D-bar circle, Mustang Meadows, section 1 plat, record 1-5, map number 1-4, GCMRBB-B and CRR County Survey, A-46 Robert Hopple Survey, A-83 City of Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, to be generally located southeast of Stonewall Pass Lane, southwest of Baker Road, northeast of Janet Lane, and northwest of Wilderness Trails, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. Staff comments?
Yes, so this is a new subdivision that is going to consist of large residential lots and an extension of Friendswood Parkway. It is a partial redesign of the Mustang Meadows plat that was, lots 1 through 14 and block 2, the streets were, the plat was recorded, but no improvements were ever installed or accepted by the city, so this is a redesign of that section of that plat. Until Friendswood Parkway is complete, access to the subdivision would be through Falling Leaf, which is a collector's street, it's on the major thoroughfare plan, it's an 80-foot roadway that is being extended. This developer is participating in tours number two and has an approved development agreement with city council, they're also doing a public improvement district. There's a lot going on with this property. So I placed before you a suggested motion tonight, it's quite extensive, we just, we've reviewed the plat, there are still a few, as far as the plat itself, the layout is not going to change. The preliminary plat, we're approving basically the street layout and that we can serve the property with utilities. But there are some issues that the developer has to work through. This is an old Exxon, the Hastings Field, so there are pipelines that have been abandoned, there's oil wells that have been abandoned, there's environmental issues that are, have been described by Exxon. So the developer has some plans to work through all that. The preliminary plat is just kind of a first step in the process. So the motion to approve with conditions tonight would be the suggestion with the conditions being that they address the comments contained in the corrections report that we updated today. There are a lot fewer comments, they addressed several, a lot of our issues, that it also be subject to submission, review, and approval of the drainage impact analysis with the full understanding that the drainage impact analysis could show the underground system will not work or they have not provided enough space in their detention ponds, which would affect the layout of the lots. Approval of the environmental remediation plan and execution as well as approval from Exxon to install infrastructure, so streets, water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer, and construct residential homes, swimming pools, and accessory structures in accordance with the current deed and title report. Currently, the entire property has restrictions for agricultural groundwater use, subsurface use, and the wells. And then it also has some restrictions as far as design and construction, impervious liners or vapor barriers and requires all structures to be built slab-on-grade. So these, there are some, there is some cleanup that they're going to do, but they're going to have to submit reports and studies, it's just going to be a, you know, a bit of a drawn-out process, but, you know, like I said, just getting the plat is getting the ball rolling. There are also two restricted areas, number one and number two, that are shown on the plat in gray. They've removed all the lots from those two, well, one area, area one is just the detention pond, restricted area two had lots, but they've removed those, so there will be no construction in those areas. Another condition would be receipt of a chemical analysis of the soil and groundwater per the International Plumbing Code of 2017. And then the pipelines, we have a letter from their engineer identifying all the pipelines, they're going to identify them and study them, and if they can be removed from the ground, they'll be documented and removed, and if they remain, they'll have to dedicate easements and provide the appropriate setbacks. So it's a lot, I apologize, but it's all, it was all typed out for y'all at your places so you were all on the same page. This will, this is approval with conditions, it will require the plat to come back to you all for a resubmital once the conditions are met. There's no deadline on the developer to resubmit the plat to the city, but once we receive it, we have to have it on an agenda within 15 days.
Yeah. Awesome. I know that was a bunch, Aubrey, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is the applicant here? If you'd just introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm Christian Offmer, River Surire for the developer.
It's a big job.
Yeah, a lot going on out there.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, well, I appreciate it. I'll start off with Ms. Marcia here first, anything, any comments you have, any questions?
There's just a lot, you know, any motion that we bring to forefront has to have a lot of, a lot of options, there's so many things that we have to clarify, but it looks like a great plan.
Yeah. Commissioner Bounds?
Well, it looks like a great plan, but I'm one that really doesn't like to prove something that we're going to have to go back and fix a lot of things on, so that's my thought on it.
Commissioner Anderson?
I have similar thoughts, like just so much, so many unknowns. I don't want to get in the way of the unknowns, but I just feel like I just have a feeling of not been having enough information to do much with it right now.
Yeah, you probably understand, there's a lot here to go through, so I definitely appreciate, I know you've got a monster of a job to do, and I really appreciate the staff going through it and trying to figure out exactly so that we're all in line, we're fed the best information, and I know there's been some updates even today. So while I think that there is a lot that needs to get done, and if we approve with conditions today, then we can go back and, because I have a couple of questions about little, you know, little things as we move along, but I think now, I think if we can get these conditions met, then we can start moving forward with everything else.
Yeah, and we still have to come back for the final plat.
Right, right. So I'd like to go ahead and motion to approve with conditions, the conditions that we discussed here, because that allows us to move forward with everything. because that allows us to move forward with everything. So that, I'll, I'll go ahead and put that motion up. A second, okay?
They're still waiting on the soil samples to come back to, it's gonna take a little while.
Right, I, I, I think there's gonna be, I think there's gonna be plenty of work that, that we're gonna need to do, so.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that. So there's been a, a motion and a, and a second, all in favor with the motion?
Yeah, she had her hand up.
Is it possible to hear more? I mean, I know you got a motion, but I just feel like so many people, I just feel like I'm missing some information that I'm just not getting.
Okay. What, um?
I, I don't know if there were people here wanting to say something, but I, I just see so many people here, and I just feel like I'd like to know what's on their minds, if possible.
Do you want to hear from?
I mean, I don't know if anyone has anything to say, but a lot of people here, but I just thought maybe there was more information.
I could elaborate on some. My name is Sel Fint, I'm the engineer of record for this project. The subject property is one hundred and seventeen acres, formerly owned by Exxon. The developer, GMK Five, purchased about three years ago. The, the property is, has a lot of challenges in terms of items to be engineered, items to, in, in field, in construction, to mitigate the necessary items. As, as the engineering firm, we have, in conjunction with the city staff, identified the salient points that we have to, to address for the environmental requirements, the stormwater management to meet drainage district requirements, and then to meet city of Friendswood design criteria. The, the project is, is complicated from, from two perspective. We're not only developing the subdivision consisting of forty-four two-acre tracts. It's a large estate development. We're also dedicating a seven-acre tract of land to the city and building the Friendswood Parkway Boulevard, albeit as part of the, a TERS number two and a, and a Pid that been created to develop one hundred and seventy-acre tract of land, which is the, the last segment, and then there is a forty-acre tract of land south of us, and then the Bi Science Tract corridor that the Friendswood Parkway will extend from five twenty-eight all the way to our property's edge. We've come here tonight in request for a approval with conditions, because the, the difficulty of this project in terms of, of phasing, financing, is very critical for us to have this win, if you will, from, from a lender's perspective, as we invested many dollars to get to this point. We need to have a, a project of thirty-nine lots vested on this property. We've, we've designed a forty-four lot subdivision on an area where the Exxon has put a restrictive deed on it. There is a chloride that we have to clean up, essentially the salt. It's the salt that they, is used to, to try to find oil. And there are twenty-two dry wells on the site, they didn't find any. They put restrictions of hundred-foot diameter on each well that we can build houses on. There are eight pipelines that's been identified. And there are three gas pipelines that are abandoned, two by Exxon, one by, one by Texas Petroleum. And we have environmental firm, Loflin, Loflin Environmental that's putting the mitigation of it, gonna remove it. And then there is a enterprise formerly crude conveyance, three of them, which has also been abandoned, which we got confirmation from these agencies. There are two pipelines that, that states the existence of them. We've been contacting the pipeline companies to, to identify in field where they are. So it's, it's a, a long journey for us from where we were to where we are now and continue to be. But, but we request for your consideration, positive consideration to give us a approval of conditions, so that we can get our lenders satisfied of progress we made, and then to, to move forward with, without having a balance in, in, in engineering and so forth. I've been developing in Friendswood for twenty-five years, and, and I understand the commissions desire to have, have a clean issues, and normally we wouldn't come before you asking for these provisions. But this, this particular project has a long road for us. To not only clean up the, the encumbrances on the site, there's coordination with the forty acres south of us, regional lift station detention, so. But, but we, that's the reason why we're coming here with conditional approval.
And I think too, Commissioner Anderson, if I, maybe I, my motion, I wasn't, I didn't give my motion well. But what I'd like to do is, my motion is to approve with conditions that staff has gone through and said, in order for us to move with the preliminary plat, these conditions that are noted here, that I guess I could read through from my motion, but I don't think it's required, is it? You read through them already, yeah. The, all these conditions be met, so that we can move forward with the preliminary plat, and then they'll come back to us with their, with the final plat. And then we can go through, if they can keep moving forward with all this, and these criteria, these conditions, I should say, have been all met, then we, then they'll come back to us and then we can move forward with it. And that's all that I'm motioning for today, is that we'll approve with these conditions to be met moving forward.
Can I ask one more question?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
What about the traffic on, on Falling Leaf? Because that's just a little country road. Sometimes it's hard for two vehicles to get past each other. Is there going to be an expansion, thoughts on, on Falling Leaf, or? I mean, there's gonna be a lot of traffic going to the high school, to HEB, whatever.
The Falling Leaf will not be widened at this point. It is on the major thoroughfare plan, like to be widened if the funding ever becomes available. Like Sel said, the, the development just south of this, the wilderness, the estates at Wilderness Trail is hot on the heels of this development too. So ideally, both developments would be, you know, developed, I mean, we can't hold them to that, but ideally, they would both kinda happen at the same time, and you would have Wilderness Trail and Falling Leaf as well. The HGAC study is still in place to finish working out the details of the Parkway connection to Pearland. And I believe Pearland has funding planned to complete their portion of the Parkway within the next few years as well. So hope, you know, the timing of everything should be happening, not simultaneously, but shortly, you know, within each other.
If I may expand on that, if you're concerned, our, our intention is to, to do not use existing Falling Leaf to access the subdivision. Our phase one, if you will, is to build the Friendswood Parkway segment. And that segment will extend to south of us and go head all the way down to five twenty-eight. So that, that major thoroughfare will be built in conjunction with our subdivision. It's not, and our access of the forty-four lot is off future Friendswood Parkway, not, not off existing Falling Leaf. The Falling Leaf will, will abut and dead end to our project, which will connect to the Friendswood Parkway.
Thank you.
Okay, so back to my original motion with conditions, and then your second.
Correct.
So all in favor? Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you. All right, moving on for communications. Announcement of the Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting for Thursday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, and Thursday, July tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
And receive the May, twenty twenty-five DRC report and the May twenty twenty-five business report, Ms. Aubrey.
The reports were both in your backup material. The, the business report is a new one. I created a business report, it just kind, kinda kept morphing and started using it for more and more committees. So I attend the chamber meeting once a month. And they wanted information, the FDEDC wanted information, CEDC wanted information. So it just kinda morphed into this report. City Council now is getting it, and now y'all are getting it.
I was just gonna ask, do you publish it to?
Yes. So it's all across the board now, and eventually we'll get it on the website. But it's just a monthly report that shows the certificates of occupancy that were issued for new businesses. So they're identified as an, if they're new, it was brand-new ground-up construction. An alteration is maybe a build-out or in addition to an existing building. And then a TO is a, just a change of occupancy, so a name change, a business owner change, or an occupant change. They still have to get a certificate of occupancy to operate business. So those are all on there, they're, like I said, the Downtown Economic Development Corporation is interested in the businesses in downtown, so those are highlighted in light blue. So anything in the downtown district is highlighted. And there is a brief synopsis of TERS one and TERS two on there, and then just information about CEDC and FDEDC. So it's, I'll start giving that to you all as well.
Awesome, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
City Councilwoman Hanks, do you have an update for us, please?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for sitting through that whole thing for us.
That's simple. That's not even as long as a city council meeting. The most important thing we did at the last city council meeting was to re-approve your appointments to, to this body. And so thank you very much, Marcia, you were approved for another year, Travis, Tom, Marcus, and Brian, I think. Y'all were each approved for another two years, and you'd already, we'd already done you, Willie. So thank you all for being willing to serve. I know sometimes you are faced with really tough decisions, and it takes a lot of courage to do what you think is right, and so I appreciate that. We need, we need people like that in our community, so thank you. Much of this meeting this month had to do with storm mitigation and getting things ready, contracts renewed and things like that, accepting some work that had already been done and the maintenance agreements on them. We did have a very interesting report, and I've asked our city count, our, our city manager, Mr. Kabiri, if maybe he could share it with y'all in the future, about the HGAC study that came through and about how many people will be moving to this area and this general region. I'll be probably dead by the time that we reach this final number, but my kids won't be, and my grandkids won't be. So it's really important that, to me anyway, to be thinking ahead and preparing for the next generation. I think that's our responsibility. So I think it's a very interesting report, and he did agree to, to share that with y'all in the future, so that will be really good. We also, not that y'all had anything to do with this, but we did approve an extension of a three-eighty agreement that the Economic Development Council recommends to city council for the Tannos property, which is the All-Britton property. So I think that will, I'm very optimistic that that will be moving forward, and we'll see a lot of development and completion of that in the near future. So that was pretty much it, anything else, my other council members? Okay, thank you again, y'all.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. And Commissioner comments, we'll go back to Commissioner Anderson.
I just wanna thank all the hard work and putting together this large package, and it was a lot of information. But also, I always really value hearing from those who are not involved with the commission. Just because I wanna make sure that I'm getting the, the full picture. That's why I really encourage people to speak up and say what's on their mind. And the more you can do that, the better I feel about decisions that I make, so thank you.
Awesome, thank you, sir. Commissioner Bounce?
Yes, thank you to the staff, great, great work, and Katie in the back. And thank you for the public for showing up. I mean, well, they have a few that show up, but we, kinda keeps us centered when, when this public shows up. So thank you for being here.
Ma'am?
I am just so pleased to see all the improvements in the city. Things that we have approved and they're being developed and, excuse me, and built. And all the projects that we go and check, you know, site plans and so forth, and then bring it to the commission here, and then being approved is just such a gratifying project and deed, I guess.
Awesome. Thank you so much to the staff, I know there's a lot of work going on. For everybody making Friendswood as awesome as we can make it, thank you to the staff and always happy to be here. And that is gonna conclude it.
Travis, thank you for stepping in to steer the committee tonight.
There we go, yeah. I apologize for my long reads, but thank you everyone for attending this evening, and the June twelfth, twenty twenty-five Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now adjourned.